Good morning, everyone. We are here today on docket number 25-32843-ECON. Hartford Healthcare Corporation and its only own subsidiary, Manchester Memorial Hospital, Inc., have applied under our new emergency process to transfer certain prospect ECHN and prospect ECHN assets, including but not limited to the assets of Prospect Manchester Hospital, including Rockville General Hospital campus, certain prospect ECHN joint metrics, certain sets of prospect medical foundation and affiliated entities as more clearly described in the asset purchase agreement. The applicants have indicated that the total proposed capital expenditure associated with this project is eighty-six million, one hundred thousand dollars at one, sorry, eighty-six million, one hundred thousand dollars. The total proposed costs include the capital expenditure, one hundred and eleven million, eight hundred thousand approximately. Today is November 18th, 2025. My name is Daniel Chuka, and I am a staff attorney with the Office of Health Strategy. On my side is Acting Commissioner Amy Porter, as well as our Director of Legislation and Regulation, Boyd Jackson. Although Mr. Jackson and I are here to assist and provide legal counsel, Acting Commissioner Porter will be presiding over this matter. She will rule on all motions and objections and will issue a decision on her report December 30th, 2025. At this time, I will invite her to introduce herself. She has also prepared some remarks that she would like to share.
Good morning, everybody. Again, my name is Amy Porter. I am the Acting Commissioner for OHS. Before we begin the hearing, I'd like to say a few words about the purposes of today's hearing, the questions that we plan to ask, and the requirements imposed on OHS when evaluating an application for an emergency CON. As you likely all know, public act number 25-2 was enacted earlier this year, and it created an expedited pathway for regulatory review of proposed transfers of ownership involving hospitals in bankruptcy protection. This can also include such hospital subsidiaries and related new law directs OHS to evaluate several criteria that are similar to our usual CON criteria when deciding whether to approve or these include the anticipated effect of the hospital's transfer of ownership on access, cost, and quality of healthcare in the affected community, including an assessment of the effect of healthcare on healthcare market concentration and healthcare access for Medicaid recipients. When issuing a final decision, we must also consider the effect of the hospital's bankruptcy on the patients and communities served by the hospital and the applicant's plan to restore liability. It is the responsibility of the applicants to provide the data and information to OHS to adequately evaluate this criteria. Today's hearing is part of the process for the applicants to present evidence. Under normal circumstances, OHS must also sometimes produce a cost and market impact review or a CMIR to study the likely impacts of the market consolidation and price. However, under the new law, there's no such requirement, though OHS does have the option of contracting with third-party consultants to analyze this and the other criteria I just mentioned. We thank the applicants for their engagement in the process, and we look forward to hearing the evidence to be presented.
Thank you.
This is a hybrid hearing. By that, I mean it is being held both in person and electronically via Zoom in accordance with Section 1-225A of the Connecticut General Statutes. Any person who is participating orally via the electronic component of this meeting will make a good faith effort to say his, her, or their name and title at the outset of each occasion that such person participates orally during uninterrupted dialogue or a series of questions and answers. I would also ask that anyone who is participating in the hearing room also identify themselves each time they speak. Sign up for public comment has already begun and will conclude at what we do. If you would like to supply commentary, please sign up either in person or in the Zoom chat box at the designated time, which is now. Please note that unlike with many other hearings, our agency has conducted the time set for commencement of
Apologies, we're trying to get them back. I'm system.
I apologize for that slight delay. Public comment can be submitted anytime up until final actions taken on the application. However, given the emergency nature of the proceeding, the agency cannot guarantee the comment will be considered if submitted more than three days from today. For anyone attending remotely, unless you are actively participating in the hearing, either as one of the applicant's witnesses or as a member of the public providing comment at the designated time, please mute the device that you are using to access the hearing and silence any additional devices that are around you. A public hearing is held pursuant to Section 1 Sub B, Sub 4 of the ECON law. As such, this matter does not constitute a case under the Uniform Administrative Procedure Act. However, the manner in which we conduct these proceedings will be guided by these statutes as well as the regulations of Connecticut State Agency in Section 19A-9-24. Mr. Jackson and I will likely be asking the bulk of OHS's questions with additional questioning to be supplied by Acting Commissioner Porter. Also present in person is CON analyst Olivia Sariano, behind me. And presently, and present remotely is Mina Capozzi, both of whom are assisting with hearing logistics, gathering names, proposing comment, and providing other support. The process is a regulatory process, and as such, the highest level of respect will be accorded to the applicants, members of the public, and our staff. Our priority is the integrity and transparency of this process. Accordingly, decorum must be maintained by all present during these proceedings. Just going to say a couple brief remarks about confidentiality. The hearing is being transcribed or recorded, and the video will also be made available on the OHS website and its YouTube account. However, if you are familiar with the docket, you have likely noticed that there have been some confidential sealed filings. It's unlikely, but possible that we will need to go into executive session to discuss some of these filings or topics they concern. And anything that takes place in executive session, although recorded and transcribed, will not be made publicly available. Although we will do our best to handle all executive session matters at once, that may be in need for some bouncing around and flexibility. We appreciate the public sensitivity to this and apologize in advance if it causes any confusion or annoyance. So for anyone attending remotely, I apologize for the interruptions. This is a new room to us, so we're having some internet connectivity issues, and Zoom keeps shutting down on us, so again, I apologize for that. I am going to start next by going over the exhibits and the items of which we are taking administrative notice. And I will ask if there are any objections. All non-confidential documents for this hearing that either have been or will be submitted to OHS are available through our electronic CNO portal, which is accessible on the OHS CNO webpage. The CNO portal contains a pre-hearing table of record in this case, which was uploaded yesterday at the time of its filing. Exhibits were identified in the table from A to P. Consequently, some others were added. Q, R, S, and T. Counsel for the applicants, please identify yourselves to the record.
I am counsel for Hartford Healthcare. My name is Joan Feldman. I'm with the law firm of Shipman and Goodwin.
Thank you very much. Are there any objections to the exhibits that I just went over?
There are no objections.
Thank you. Do you have any additional exhibits that you wish to enter at this time?
Not.
The only item that we are planning to take administrative notice of is the agreed settlement reached in docket number 20-32405-CON, permitted the consolidation of Rockville General Hospital and Manchester Memorial Hospital under the MMH license. It was referenced a few times in your application materials. Do you have any objection to our taking administrative notice?
Objections.
Thank you. As the hearing progresses, we may also seek to take administrative notice of other records, including prior OHS decisions, agreed settlements, and determinations that may be relevant, which have not yet been identified. Now, we will proceed in the order established by the agenda for today's hearing. I just want to advise the applicants and their witnesses that we may ask questions related to the pre-hearing submissions that you feel you have already addressed. We will do this for the purpose of ensuring that the public has knowledge of the proposal and for the purpose of clarification. I want to reassure you that we have a docket, and we continue to do so up until a decision is rendered. As this hearing is being held in hybrid fashion, we ask that all participants attending via Zoom enable the use of video cameras when testifying or commenting remotely. And again, all participants in the public should mute their devices, disable their cameras when we go off the record to take a break. Please be advised that although we will try to shut off the hearing before the breaks, it may continue. As Mr. Jackson mentioned earlier, before we went off the record, there are various cameras in this room, as well as microphones, which may pick up, whatever you say, here in the back. If the technology continues to run, any video and audio that has not been disabled will be accessible to all participants through the Zoom function. One last comment regarding public comment. It will likely go in the order established by OHS during the registration process. However, we will allow public officials and clinical professionals to testify on order. Registration for public comment has already begun, as I mentioned earlier. Public comment will begin at 1:00 PM, even if we can detect it earlier, or if the technical portion is stopping completely. There are certain exceptions for executives and clinical staff and witnesses should be available after public comment, as OHS has follow-up questions. Are there any other housekeeping matters or particular issues you would like to address before we start? I'll just say, I said this a moment ago, at the present time, I believe we only have one person right now. Obviously, that can change between now and 1:00. What happens? We just have people watching the video, so they'll let us know if it cuts off at any point, and we'll just stop you where we are so that you don't have to repeat yourself for the record. Apologies in advance if we have to interrupt. So I was going to swear everyone in, but I think it's Attorney Feldman, which he preferred, at Mr. Flax warning first, and then everyone, or how?
What?
So if I can just have everyone who may make remarks come over here. You with the camera. Stand behind the table. Can I have everyone please raise the right hand, Attorney Feldman? Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that the evidence you shall give or have already given in this case shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you God or upon penalty of perjury? Let the record reflect that everyone in the room has raised the right hand, well, everyone at the applicant's desk raised their hand and affirmed to the oath. So you can all sit down for the time being now. And I just realized I'm going to have to have you all introduce yourselves a little bit later. I'm not going to have you come back, but we'll have to have you yourselves. So the applicants may now proceed. When giving testimony, please make sure to state your full name and title at the outset.
I begin with some opening remarks. Thank you very much. Again, thank you, Commissioner and OHS staff for your cooperation in connection with the proposed and unprecedented emergency CON application. On behalf of the applicant, we must state that today's hearing is not about laying blame for the operational and financial problems before us. Quite the contrary, it's an opportunity to recognize and thank the dedicated CHN Manchester Memorial Health staff for their steadfast commitment to maintaining access to healthcare services in the greater Manchester community under very challenging circumstances. In fact, all received offer letters yesterday to join Manchester Memorial Hospital in their respective roles. Must state as a long-term Manchester resident, born witness to the many trials and tribulations of Manchester Memorial Hospital that led to this critical point in time, this now distressed community hospital. It's undeniable that the healthcare industry has experienced strong headwinds, and we have seen the negative impact that such headwinds have had on many of our own states, standalone, independent community hospitals. We have also seen the tremendous advantages that endure to community hospitals when they are part of a highly functional and financially stable health system. Just this week, on the 13th, Leapfrog published a report and found that nearly 95% of the hospitals receiving an A grade patient safety this fall are all affiliated with a health system as opposed to being an independent or standalone entity organization hospital. Interestingly, Connecticut was one of five states with the highest number of A ratings, which I attribute largely to Hartford Healthcare. Fortunately, Hartford Healthcare, a nonprofit health system, is proposing to invest its expertise in hundreds of millions of dollars to restore and reinvigorate Manchester Memorial Hospital and its affiliated service providers so that world-class healthcare services are offered in the greater Manchester community. In fact, it is important for the public to know that HHC, or Hartford Healthcare, was the only bidder pending Texas Prospect Medical Holdings bankruptcy proceeding being held in Texas. Had Hartford Healthcare not come forward, the community hospital we know and love would have closed, like so many other standalone community hospitals across the nation. Today's focus, testimony will be on the enhancements that Hartford Healthcare will bring to the community. They are remarkable and also proven. There's no better way to articulate the enormous benefit that Hartford Healthcare will bring to the greater Manchester community than to have Hartford Healthcare's president and CEO, Mr. Jeffrey Flax, discuss HHS's success and experience in enhancing system-affiliated community hospitals and the impact it has had with respect to quality, safety, and access to world-class services. Thank you.
We don't have any. Would Mr. Flax like to make some remarks?
Yes, he would like to provide some remarks.
Thank you. Good morning, Acting Commissioner Porter, members of the OHS staff. My name is Jeff Flax. I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer of Hartford Healthcare. I thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of this emergency certificate of need application. But I'm tremendously excited. This is a generational opportunity and a generational moment for healthcare in the Manchester and Rockville communities. Hartford Healthcare, we are uniquely positioned. They make healthcare significantly more accessible, more affordable, make significant improvements in both health equity and quality in these communities. There are tremendous numbers of people today within the Manchester and Rockville communities who receive healthcare outside of these local communities. Our intention is to bring the programs, the services, the providers, physicians, the expertise of Hartford Healthcare, and embed them in these local communities so that we can keep people closer to home. And healthcare is significantly more affordable by delivering it in these communities, making it significantly more accessible, and most importantly, it raises the quality. So what we intend to do, use our capacity, our capabilities, our commitment to drive these improvements. Hartford Healthcare has done this numerous times. We're proven. We've done it most recently at St. Vincent's in the Greater Bridgeport area. We've done it in the Greater Torrenton area in Charlotte-Hungford. We've risen those institutions from a D in Leapfrog when we started St. Vincent's to an A today. Similarly, at Charlotte-Hungford, it went from initially a C in Leapfrog to an A at several marking periods, and most recently a B. We've continued to rise to that level of performance. Hartford Healthcare is a national leader. This year, we're tremendously proud to receive the Quest for Quality Prize for the American Hospital Association. We recognized amongst 8,000-plus institutions across America as the awardee for the highest level of quality and safety. It's a tremendous honor for the state of Connecticut, and it's so important to our regions. We will take that same apparatus that we've built across all the communities Hartford Healthcare serves, bring it to greater Rochester, greater Inchester, and Rockville communities. We have received just this week, you know, our Leapfrog scores again. Attorney Feldman recognized, we're at the top performance in the country. Six of our seven facilities receiving an A, one receiving a B. We've had several markets where we've had straight A's. Amongst the only institutions ever to do that in the country. Hartford Hospital now again was recognized just this week for one of the top 75 academic medical centers in America for Leapfrog quality and safety performance. They've now achieved that several times in a row, the only one state of Connecticut to ever achieve that. We have just again received perfect scores from the Society of Thoracic Surgery, 18 stars out of 18 stars, ranking us the highest heart and vascular program from a quality and safety standpoint in America. This year, we received the Innovation Award from Modern Healthcare. We received the Innovation Award from Press Gaining. All of the resources, all of the capabilities within Hartford Healthcare will be extrapolated and brought to the Manchester and Rockville communities. And that's why I'm so confident that we can make healthcare more accessible, more affordable, rest the chronic issues around health equity, and most, and raise quality, make it better. We're going to invest more than $300 million. We're going to add jobs, significant number of jobs in the community. Bring the institutes within Hartford Healthcare. We're going to bring the Center for Artificial Intelligence, the Center for Education Simulation Innovation, our Neighborhood Health Program. Again, all of the resources, all the capabilities in Hartford Healthcare will be brought to east of the river and brought into these communities to make healthcare locally more convenient and better. We're going to bring our electronic health record, bring all of our technology, we'll bring all of our ancillary services, all of our capabilities, our digital front door, all of our capabilities through home care services, and the robust apparatus of Hartford Healthcare brought to these communities, make healthcare better. And that's why I'm so confident that we have this very unique opportunity dramatically improve healthcare that will be here for generations going forward within these communities. We have the commitment. We have the resources. We're a local organization across Connecticut, serving this region, completely committed to the local communities, completely committed to our people. Hartford Healthcare is recognized in the last two weeks by Career Mind as the leading organization in the state of Connecticut, one of 50 across the country, for how we advance and promote and invest in our people. And as Attorney Feldman mentioned, there's tremendous people, tremendous capabilities and commitment in communities, within these institutions of Manchester Memorial. We're going to bring support to them, invest in these, in our people in these communities, and bring resources to elevate the level of care and level of capabilities. So I'm very thankful to have the opportunity to present today. I could not be more confident in our capacity to do this and more confident in us having the resources and capabilities to deliver the promises and commitments that we've made. Thank you for the opportunity to present today.
Are you going to be hanging around to answer some questions with us? Okay. Attorney Feldman, did you have anyone else who wanted to present?
We do not.
I think we can bring everyone back up, and we'll move into questions.
Sure. Do you want to do it by person or have everybody sitting up here? Whatever is easier.
We don't really know who will be answering questions. I think it makes sense to have everyone.
That's good.
We'll be periodically taking breaks, probably, certainly if anyone breaks themselves. The first thing I'm going to do is have everyone identify themselves, since we did do that earlier. That's my fault. Or with, actually, Attorney Feldman, do you have an order in which you prefer?
We do not.
Okay, so we get this.
Sure. For the record, my name is Karen Goyette. I am the Executive Vice President, Chief Strategy and Transformation Officer for Hartford Healthcare.
For the record, I am Deborah Hayes. I am the Chief Integration Officer at Hartford Healthcare.
For the record, Dr. Pram Kumar, I am Senior Vice President, President of Hartford Healthcare.
For the record, I'm the Chief People Officer for Rosemary Sheen.
So. So we're basically just going to ask questions and throw it out to you, and you can decide who would be most appropriate to answer the questions.
One moment.
Apologies.
Any calls.
General Wood there, Senior Vice President, Finance Operations, Hartford Healthcare.
I think we're complete.
So we're going to start with some general questions, and we're going to try to do these. After, after that, we're going to try to do them sort of by category in terms of what we're supposed to look at from a perspective. But just starting first with a very general question. The APA, that's the Asset Purchase Agreement, was signed by ECHN Holdings Inc. And then that name was changed to Manchester Memorial Hospital Inc. So is there any material change to the structure or organization management business that goes along with that change?
As legal counsel, may I respond? Absolutely not. The ECHN was a placeholder. It's the same corporation, the same tax ID number. Nothing changed other than we amended Secretary of State and name change.
Next point is going to be talking about the Community Health Needs Assessment Process. As a for-profit entity, Prospect has not had to engage in the Community Health Needs Assessment. That's the CHNA process. An acquisition by Hartford Healthcare means MMH will need to do so. When I say MMH, I'm referring to Manchester Memorial Hospital. If I say an acronym that, you know, you don't recognize, just let me know when I have to define it. So can you describe what is required of the CNH, CHNA development and implementation process now that MMH will be a nonprofit?
Sure. So Hartford Healthcare will work with the community greater Manchester, Manchester Memorial Hospital to immediately engage in a comprehensive community needs health assessment. This is part of our standard work, our strategic planning process. Not only does it happen once a system is acquired, but also on a three-year annual basis. It's comprehensive in that we're engaging the local communities, conducting forums, working with both people internal to the organization and external community leaders to really assess where there's gaps, such as provider needs, and where we feel that we can enhance the quality and access within the community. We expect that that would take 90 days, ending a number of 1-1 acquisitions.
I'm sorry, that you expect the CHNA to take 90 days? That's faster than I expected. That's why I asked for clarification. Are there any enhancements above and beyond what is legally required that Hartford Healthcare typically does in terms of their CHNA process?
Enhancements to that process or enhancements that we see surfaces within?
Process. The CHNA process is a required process. Are there any enhancements to that process that Hartford Healthcare builds in? You mentioned that it relates to the strategic planning. Elaborate on how that works.
Sure. As I highlighted, we typically bring in an external validated source to look at a provider needs assessment. So we're assessing every specialty and community service within the community to understand where there are gaps and where we feel that we can augment those. We engage with our institute leaders to understand where they had challenges in finding care for those folks. I think more importantly, what we've developed in terms of forums to engage and talk to local community members and community agencies who are helping service this community is, I think, unique to Hartford Healthcare and this process.
Do you have a?
All right, we're back. I apologize again for the interruption. Supposedly, it is some sort of statewide, you know, state agency issue, not specific to this room. So I'm going to ask that you repeat yourself. I'm sorry, and I can ask the question again. Has Hartford Healthcare done any sort of preliminary assessment of the community prior to close?
We have conducted an internal assessment. We have not engaged with any outside agencies that we would normally be doing as part of this process to really assess the community need and have that stakeholder engagement.
And what have you found as part of that thus far?
I think, I believe we see a number of opportunities. As Jeff highlighted in his opening comments, we have made measurable improvements on many of the systems that we have brought into Hartford Healthcare. Immediately, we think there's an opportunity to bring additional access to partnerships such as our urgent care models. We've seen great enhancements in that. On the inpatient side, Manchester Memorial is about 50% capacity. And as we've highlighted in our application, Hartford Hospital is about 95% capacity on the inpatient side. We think that there is an opportunity to keep care local to the community and do travel and make care more affordable.
You spoke about a 90-day timeline for completion. For the public interested in this process, can you give, talk about community engagement? Can you speak about kind of the big benchmarks along that 90-day process and what the public can expect to see? And then what their opportunities are within that timeline to engage and share their thoughts about what the community needs?
We tried to hold a number of forums, not only coming into the facility at Manchester, but going out to within the community. I would see one of the first indications is us working with the local officials to. I would see the element being engaging with the providers and physicians that are caring for already in the community, not only who are already working directly with Hartford Healthcare, but have been working within the Manchester and greater areas. We would compile that assessment and bring it forward with leadership for vetting and work with communities in terms of an execution plan on those.
And for community members who are interested in seeing the process or participating, do you post community engagement notices on your website? Or where should they even eye out?
I would say social media as well as websites. We'll have a dedicated webpage set up for people to engage.
And the results are also posted online or they presented or? Shifting focus a little bit. The application indicates that Hartford Healthcare anticipated kicking off what it called Phase 1 of integration the day after the APA was signed. Does that mean the parties have already started integrating?
Yes, so we're approaching the integration in two phases. So the first phase being prior to close, and then the second phase of the map. But for the first thing.
The work is to ensure that we can operate effectively on January 1st with no disruption to operations. So all the work that we are doing is focused on five key goals for January 1st, which is to enable ourselves to provide safe patient care, to pay our new colleagues, to bill for that care, to manage critical vendors, and then to begin to infuse the Hartford Healthcare culture into the Manchester and Rockville communities. Phase two will begin immediately post-close, and that's where we will activate our standard integration plan, which activates 30-plus cross-functional work groups. We will work towards implementing a new ERP, which is the system that governs our finance, supply chain, and HR, as well as implementing Epic across the board with all of the associated IT clinical applications that go with that. We'll be integrating our clinical programs, integrating our operations, and implementing Hartford Healthcare's operating model.
And how has integration been going so far with Phase 1?
It's going incredibly well. It's going fast. But to date, from an HR perspective, we have secured offer letters and acceptances from the ECHN leadership team. We sent out offers to all of the current ECHN employees to become Hartford Healthcare employees on January 1st. We've created an onboarding program with a microsite that we launched with important information for our new colleagues. We have benefit enrollment plans set up and ready to be launched on December 15th. From an IT perspective, we've completed a full IT assessment, an implementation plan for Epic and for the ERP systems. We've completed a system-wide inventory, equipment inventory. We've begun to place orders for the new equipment that's necessary for operations on January 1st. We have a complete IT application completed, and our clinical application deep dive is well underway. And then overall, we're nearly complete on working through the 3,000-plus vendor contracts that we have to disposition them at the end. We've solidified approach for our real estate contracts, our biomed assessments. We've developed credentialing and enrollment planning, completed reconciliation of our med staff and med group roster. We've determined a day-one email strategy as well as a badging strategy. And we've developed and begun implementation of quality communication plan with our ECHN partners.
I think you mentioned a minute ago that all offer letters had gone out already. And I think Attorney Feldman mentioned earlier that they went out yesterday for all non-executives. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Has, were any employees excluded? Or did Hartford Healthcare send out offer letters to everyone?
No employees are excluded.
And are those subject to any sort of diligence? So like you said, the offers, but if it's later determined that they're on one of the agent lists, they'll be, offer will be revoked or anything along those lines?
No.
Thank you. Anyone attending remotely, we just took a eight-ish minute break to set up a hotspot in the room. That way, we can try to resolve some of the connectivity issues. I apologize again for the interruptions, but I think we're in good shape now. So we're going to continue with the questions. The the asset purchase agreement includes the purchase of assets of Prospect CT Medical Foundation, Inc. by HHC's Medical Foundation, which is known as Hartford Healthcare Medical Group. However, Prospect's Medical Foundation has several business as entities and includes healthcare providers across the state, including in the Waterbury area. Can you just clarify whether you are acquiring all of PCTMH or just the Eastern Connecticut Medical Professionals?
Yeah, as counsel, I'd like to just clarify that just the ECHN physicians, not Waterbury.
Okay. That wasn't clear from the application, which is why I was asking. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Always read the footnotes. That's where the important stuff is.
Yeah.
Especially for me, if you ever read one of my decisions. So as you just said, there will be no impact on the Waterbury area. Does that go for cardiology associates of greater Waterbury as well? You're not involved? Okay. So talking more about the APA, it indicates that this transaction includes the purchase of Prospect CT Management Services, doing business as medical practice partners, which is a wholly owned subsidiary of Prospect CT. Does this management services entity operate across the state, including in the Waterbury area?
It's just Waterbury. We have counsel here for Prospect, but it's just Waterbury, and we will not be contracting with that entity for service, management services, unless it's for a transitional short period of time consists with things like billing, perhaps. Be very, very.
I'm a little bit confused, so.
Nothing with Waterbury.
Okay.
It functions primarily for Waterbury.
Okay. What, Hartford Healthcare is acquiring it?
No.
Okay, well, the APA, Schedule A to the APA indicates that the selling entity, the selling entity is Prospect, Prospect CT Management Services.
To the extent, to the extent that there's any connection with Waterbury. To the extent, to the extent that there's any connection with Waterbury, any of those assets would be bifurcated and would not be assumed by Manchester Memorial Hospital, Inc. That is definitively clear. To extent there are any assets that, and we're talking about an asset purchase, so we're not acquiring the organization, any assets that are relevant to ECHN would be listed on the schedule.
So how about Prospect Provider Group CT? It casually indicates Hartford Healthcare is going to acquire that.
So let me just simplify and clarify for purposes of interpreting the APA. Whatever physicians are practicing on behalf of ECHN, Manchester Memorial Hospital and its affiliates, they're all being offered participation in the Hartford Healthcare, Manchester Memorial Hospital, Inc. in any capacity, either as hospital physicians who are employed by the hospital or physicians who are affiliated with the former PMH Medical Foundation. So that's the big picture.
And since.
So if there are physicians in the community and private practice that are affiliated with Medical Foundation, they will continue on Hartford Healthcare as being just a memorial.
All right, Attorney Feldman, you're in the middle of speaking about a caring hand.
Right. So those are not licensed by the Department of Public Health. Those companion and homemaker agencies, they register with the Department of Consumer Protection. It's not operational to the extent that there are any kind of hard assets associated or intellectual property with the name, those are, those assets are included in the APA. Want to get back to the, your earlier question about the management company for Waterbury. That's a management company that manages a Waterbury ambulatory surgery center and has nothing to do with ECHN. Clarification, sometimes when transactional lawyers are handling these very, very large transactions, there might be, instead of pure on schedules that are, that are not relevant, so.
I wanted to go back and ask a question about the Medical Foundation. The, the application repeatedly references offers being made to physicians. Does the Medical Foundation include any other advanced practice?
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, pardon the interruptions. So I'm not sure that we got your response on the record, so I just want to make sure that we, we have that as part of the record. Are all members of the Medical Foundation, including other advanced practitioners, being included? Part of the trend. President of Hartford Healthcare Medical Group, all providers are all. All right, thank you. So. Want to talk a little bit about the equity interest and the joint ventures. So the application specifically identifies three, Neuron LLC, Evergreen Endoscopy Center, Talon Imaging Center, so Patrick. But a filing in the Yale Prospect, you know, when application indicated that Neuron was 25% owned by EMH. Prospect Medical Holdings, and 25% owned, RHI, the both parent companies. HHC represents that Manchester Memorial and Rockefeller General, you call 25%. You explained whether it's the parent company or hospitals that are part of this application. That are the current owners. You don't know the answer to that, that's fine.
You please restate your question. It's not clear to me what you're looking for.
We're trying to figure out whether it is Prospect, like the parent company, Prospect Medical Holdings, that is the owner of, or that has the joint ventures and.
I can tell you, because I've been around a long time, when Neuron was formed, I was engaged in that on behalf of Hartford Hospital. This was initiated, a joint venture that was initiated by Dr. Solner, who is no longer, I think he's still around. So it was an initiative of Hartford Hospital. And it's my understanding that when this was first established, it was the hospitals that had the ownership interest.
So in terms of, that is, the Talon. Imaging Center, according to some filings.
By way of an affiliated community, Wyndham Hospital.
So Hartford's ownership, if this transaction is approved, will go up to 85%.
Correct, correct. I would also point out that this is not a licensed healthcare facility.
All right, we continue to experience some activity issues. I apologize for that. The next one on the list was Evergreen Endoscopy Center. Hartford Healthcare currently has 0% and they'll go to either 50% or 83% ownership interest.
No, 50%.
Okay.
I just want to, to extend, I'm trying to understand this nature of the questions. Operations at all three of these JVs will continue as they are currently performing other than enhancements in quality or access, since hours and things like that.
I understand that they'll continue to operate that way for a certain period of time. But by asking these questions, we're establishing that Hartford is going to acquire governance and control of these facilities.
Only to the, only, yeah, except to the extent that the operating agreements associated with these entities change in that matter, but it's not guaranteed. And the equity interest will increase, but as far as control and ability of other interest holders to have a change in their control, it's, it has not been addressed at this point in time.
And all right, to belabor this, but I do just want to try to get through the rest of these. So Neuron will go from 25% to 75%, is that correct?
For what?
Neuron.
Yes.
So the, to get back, the last question was the one that you were just addressing, which is, given these changes in ownership percentage, what does that mean for operations? What does it mean for governance, control? And to the extent that that hasn't been worked out yet, what is the timeline for the kind of plan for whatever has to go on to work that out?
If that all three of these entities were functional and stable, so we don't expect there to be tremendous operational impact at all. In terms of governance, those are post-closing issues. Obviously, there are so many regulatory, under employee doc, you know, issues on the table. It's not, A was not our motivation for the transaction and B is not a high priority. So to be quite transparent, it's just not yet the area of focus in terms of change in control. But if there is any change in control, it would be to sure that these JVs are operated similarly to all of our other affiliated entities across the system.
So. Are any of these three that we just discussed licensed to somebody, which is?
Oh, I'm sorry, too. Neuron is licensed as an outpatient clinic. The service that they provide is exclusively radiation therapy for pain-surprised patients. The Endoscopy Center is jointly held by Connecticut GI and several dependent physicians. And that is licensed as an ambulatory surgery center.
Does Hartford have any ownership interest in CTGI?
No. The physician group.
So to the extent that Harvard is acquiring the equity interest, as you explained, which is different from the operating agreement, are you intending for whatever changes to governance occur to be covered under this emergency process?
Yes, yes.
So. It worked out post-close?
Yes, so to the extent that you're interested in us submitting any information regarding the change in governance, those change in control, we'd be happy to provide that post.
Yeah.
Closing. Thank you.
Thank you. There were a couple other joint ventures that the, right, Prospect ECHN currently has that Hartford Healthcare indicated, or is not indicated that it plans to acquire. Those are Connecticut Occupational Medicine Partners and Metro Wheelchair.
Metro Wheelchair, as far as I understand, is no longer operating. As far as health, so let me just explain to you, Attorney Jessica. We have assigned APA. And as we continue to pursue our regulatory approvals, there might be slight amendments regarding what's included or excluded from the asset purchase. That does not include the hospital, the home health agency, and these JVs. There might be things like the health intellectual property. But it's not been yet addressed through the APA in a definitive manner.
With that, so we're, we're going to turn our focus now to, I'm sorry. We're going to turn our focus to access. Something we're. With when it comes to internet today. So questions nine and 11 of the application request specific details, data and evidence from prior transactions that Hartford Healthcare. That support how the proposed transfer will ensure enhanced access. You provided a lot of data and information, the abbreviated cost and market impact reviews submissions. But we were hoping you could supply. But we were hoping you could supply some more, say, about specific improvements you have seen in access to your prior transactions and how you will ensure. And enhance access at MMA and the Royal General campus.
I'd be happy to, again, Karen, yet, I could not be more proud of the work we've done about prior acquisitions and transactions in terms of bringing access to each of these communities. And we have a number of ones. And as we've highlighted, through, you know, determines of need and figuring out where those needs are, we've been able to bring additional primary care providers, specialists based on those needs. We've made significant investments, not only local to those campuses, but also looking at the ambulatory needs of the greater markets that we've been in. We've brought new partnerships such as our Co-Health Urgent Care, where we see, you know, upwards of 600,000 visits a year.
Again, for that interruption, we're back on the record. And Ms. Goi, you were making a.
Yes, I was making it kind of about additional access to affordable healthcare in terms of a number of ambulatory surgery centers. Harvard Healthcare, about 43% of all of our surgical cases happen outside of the hospital vault. It's proven to be lower cost and really creating your access for the community.
So those are all very broad general statements, you did provide some, some data there or some specific figures, but are there, are there any like specific. To either the acquisition of Charlotte Hungerford or St. Vincent's or accolades or benchmarks related to access that you.
Of course, we would start with our, our quality metrics, and I know that's already been highlighted, but I think it's extremely important that both of those assets, when we brought them on, were either, either rated by the progress either. C and both a success, we've been brought up to an A a number of years, so I think that's extremely important. We have created many outpatient forums for care and our institute models have then brought up to standards. And our ambulatory initiatives, and so that's why I was. In, in each, I know we, we had an application, we've invested millions of dollars in both communities and bringing. And we're still.
We can continue. Harvard Healthcare wrote in the application that it anticipates making service enhancements in the areas of rehabilitative medicine, vascular surgical services. Orthopedics, general surgery, cardiology, oncology, diagnostic imaging services. We talked a little bit about this earlier, but how did Harvard Healthcare identify those areas for enhancement and expansion?
We identified that through working with internally with our institutes in terms of what they heard from providers, so obviously quantify that. I can say in both Charlotte, we recruited approximately 10 new primary care providers in the area of St. Vincent's. It was approximately 50 new primary care providers, so we added it to the community. I was also saying, and I understand the issue with our wifi, you know, we recently launched ATC 24/7, which is really bringing unprecedented access to all the communities of Connecticut, but in all the ones that we need to serve. In terms of virtual and, you know, really health equitable care to a lower cost setting.
And I don't recall if we got that on record, what, what is that particular program?
Harvard Healthcare, ATC 24/7 is a virtual platform for primary care. It's available 24.
Can I just say something about access, Attorney? Really, what we're talking about here is, I hate to be grim, but we're talking about a hospital that had no other bidders in the bankruptcy proceeding. So when we talk about access, we're talking about the potential of not having a hospital in this community. And the, the opportunity to not only have an excellent hospital, hospital, but to keep that hospital, all the staff that are working at that hospital employed and open. That is definitely access.
Thank you. Harvard Healthcare indicates that ECHM patients have outmigrated to Harvard Hospital and other facilities. And that you hope to reestablish trust in the local hospitals and have the patients. What percentage of Harvard Healthcare's current patient census do you anticipate returning to the ECHM areas? Is there any data to report this?
Can guess that data to you, we have that data.
I'm understanding that that.
I think the point that we were trying to make or that Miss Goyet was trying to make is that Harvard Hospital currently is operating.
That's the constraint. At Harvard Hospital.
Yes, and so currently, as Miss Goyet testified, Harvard Hospital is at 95% capacity for talking about inpatient beds. Harvard Hospital is a coronary care hospital. Manchester Memorial Hospital is tertiary care hospital. To the extent that people east of the river need the more acute level of care that is not provided in Manchester, but is provided at Harvard, we'll continue going to Harvard Hospital. To the extent that folks from east of the river or greater Manchester area are receiving, let's say, an incremental hernia. Here, it of course would likely be inpatient these days, but something that is not, that doesn't have an extremely high acuity. There's no reason why they couldn't have that procedure done closer home in Manchester. We know from our data that many of the patients that receive tertiary care services at Harvard Hospital. Come from that greater Manchester area. So we are hopeful that that will result in some decompression at Harvard Hospital with respect to capacity issues, and we could fill those beds with people that have coronary care. We'll get you specifics of that data after the hearing.
And speaking to this hope of bringing patients home, we often hear, understanding that your prior acquisitions may not have been as close to Harvard Hospital, so they may not have been going to Harvard Hospital. But can you speak to the experience of bringing patients back to those facilities when you've improved the access and quality, as you described? Any information or data that you can point to about what that experience has been like?
Certainly, we have had that experience as we've worked with our physicians and our institutes to really bring, bring up the capabilities of the facilities. As it relates to specific data, we're going to have to give people file, share what exactly those numbers are. And as you highlighted, it is very and based on location to location.
And some of what we've heard is about, you know, improving the ZEEVed quality. Okay.
Specifically, you know, had the example with Vincent's, where we are able to add five new ORs on capacity and the associated providers and specialists to really bring those capabilities to that sense.
And part of the conversation. Part of the conversation has been about the residents' perception of quality and, and a return. Have you all done analyses of how the, how residents and patients have changed their opinion of hospitals over time? Kind of what that timeline is like for improving patient trust and, and how that translates to this community?
Certainly, you're highlighting a very important point. You have to picture within these communities right now, they have had independent monitors and state monitors within their, their organizations, you know, since the bankruptcy occurred. They are faced with multiple press, you know, releases and stories just highlighting kind of potential perception and concerns and, and quality. I do anticipate that it's going to take, you know, our trust and constant working with communities to turn that around, but I do absolutely believe that.
I would also, just because we did before you, I think it was in March, on behalf of St. Vincent's Medical Center, with a request for approval of five additional operating rooms. And associated with that request was the fact that we had, Hartford Healthcare had recruited 37 additional surgeons over a period of a three-year period from outside the state. Who were attracted to, for the first time, to Hartford Healthcare, not St. V's before Hartford Healthcare acquired the hospital. And the reason they were attracted was because of the institute model, because of the quality ratings, and because of the resources that Hartford Healthcare invests in all of its community hospitals without any kind of discrimination. We would not have asked for five more ORs.
We're back, Attorney Feldman, you were speaking about recruiting a physician to St. Vincent's to addition to operators.
Yeah, and I think probably the most. Valuable metric in terms of the impact that improvements in quality and investment in these hospitals. Indicates is that since we took over or acquired St. Vincent's Medical Center, the number of surgical cases performed on a monthly basis has doubled.
All right. We are hearing from technology services that they need to get back in the room to fix this, so we're going to take a break until they can restore our service. Inditively set. Periodic updates to the people online.
Welcome back, this is a hearing regarding docket number 25-3343-ECOM. Excuse me, it's regarding the transfer of ownership involving Harvard Healthcare Corporation and Manchester Memorial Hospital acquiring ECHM and some related entities. We just took about a 20-minute break to try to resolve some technological issues that we continue to experience. Apparently, it's even bigger than the state agencies, and it's likely some sort of national outage of some kind involving CloudFlare and Amazon Web Services, so. We are going to continue to try to do our best going forward. We have looked through our questions and we've tried to streamline some things, so. With that, oh, I did want to mention for anyone who's in the room or online, that public comment signup is continuing until 1:00 PM. So if you haven't signed up, if you want to sign up, feel free to do so either in the Zoom chat. feel free to do so either in the Zoom chat or in person. And with that, I appointed her to Mr. Jackson to ask a few questions.
And I want to assure the folks online that anytime there is an outage, we are stopping the hearing, circling back and reiterating anything that may have been missed or starting from a new question. Folks online or viewing the reporting are not missing anything going on in the room. Just before the break, we were talking about the experience in bringing in new physicians at St. Vincent's, expanding ORs. I was hoping to hear a little more. We often hear the state as the agency about challenges in recruiting people, providers to the state of all types. And, you know, we hear about shortages of providers, difficulties recruiting. But can you speak a little bit, I know we heard a little bit about some of what you believe attracts people to your network, but can you speak a little bit about the experience in recruiting and how you've brought in new practitioners?
From my present Hartford Healthcare Medical Group, I think providers this day and age are looking for consistency, stability. They're looking for quality. They're looking for a place to grow and develop. And everything that Mr. Flax mentioned when we started is true for Hartford Healthcare. And that's what I think allows us to be able to recruit. We're also tremendously community focused. So the ability for our providers to be in our communities, really to care for our people, to be part of the organization has allowed us to be both successful on the primary care side and on the specialty care side. We also offer coronary care centers in addition to having a community hospital. So it allows folks to have a depth of an academic center in addition to being out of the community to really care for our patients. So I think that that's what's really allowed us to be successful. We also have tremendous partnerships with schools and universities within the state of Connecticut, which allows us to be advanced practitioner schools, medical residencies, allows them to come into our facilities and really learn. Then also allows us a pool of folks that really want to be part of the organization where they have learned, but also where they want to grow development for people and be within the state of Connecticut.
And I think we heard reference earlier that citing to the experience at St. Vincent's, it is bringing in new graduates and out-of-state physicians. So those who may be concerned of a growing network gobbling up other providers, you've, your experience has been in recruiting new providers to the state and new providers out of school.
Yeah, from Gamar, Hartford Medical Group, yes, that's absolutely.
And, and to go back to your earlier response, it's, it's across the spectrum of advanced practice practitioners, not just the physicians.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we're going to shift focus away from that a little bit. Hartford Healthcare has said that there's no immediate plan to terminate services at Hartford Healthcare and Trust Memorial Hospital. Is Hartford Healthcare willing to commit to not terminating any services for any period of time?
Yes, we've committed that there would be no immediate change in services. I think we need to determine what comes out of the community health assessment to determine your state, but as of right now, I guess there'll be no services.
I just add to that. Response to one of the questions which was asked, as you pointed out in the application, in the last ten years in connection with any of the hospitals that we've acquired, I guess, and St. Vincent's and Charlotte-Hungarford Hospital, there's been obsolete termination of services, including the Hospital of Central Connecticut.
When did Hartford Healthcare acquire Hospital of Central Connecticut? That's A G O C C.
It might have been more than ten years, two thousand and ten.
I'm sure we have a record of it somewhere. Tony Feldman, if that's possible, like that is good information to have, but if you could have to share that, that would be beneficial. I thought it was helpful to have you talk about the asset purchase agreement because that's an area which you specialize in, but with regard to Rockville General's current services, it indicates, so page five thirty-four of the application, it indicates there are fifty-two behavioral health beds that are leased by Manchester Memorial. Can you explain this? We thought all the beds have been merged underneath the Manchester Memorial license effective October first.
I answer that because that's the application. The application was submitted before the consolidation. The two hospitals under one license.
Yeah, it was filed a month after consolidation.
It was submitted November one. The consolidation occurred October one.
Or twenty eighth. Oh, it's my birthday, twenty eighth. Point the birthday present.
State your question, please.
So that if you look at page five thirty-four of the application, it says there are fifty-two behavioral health beds at Rockville General that are leased by Manchester Memorial. So we were trying to figure out how that could have been because we thought they were all brought under the Manchester Memorial.
That would be true. That preceded the consolidation of the two hospitals under one license. They were Manchester Hospital beds.
Hartford Healthcare indicates that plans may include expanding inpatient behavioral health to a thirty-bed unit at Rockville General. So we were just curious, how does that thirty number reconcile with the fifty-two that was referenced?
It is my understanding that they're operating twenty-five bed on the full campus for behavioral health. We think that there is an opportunity to bring additional behavioral services and potentially have new programming and really enhance the services at that campus.
While we're talking about services at that campus, under the agreed settlement that we took administrative notice of allowing for the consolidation, it required that any bidders be made aware of the expectations the state had that emergency department services and behavioral and inpatient behavioral health beds that are there would be maintained, re-walled, made aware of this expectation. And are you able to commit to maintaining ED services, emergency department services in the Rockville community and the inpatient behavioral health beds within a radius? And, and you understand that as we understand that question? Or do you understand that as we understand that to not allow substitution of those beds for other existing beds within thirty miles, but that those beds would be preserved as well as the other beds where they may be moved?
Not sure I understand. You had a lot of remarks there.
Relocate those beds within the radius that's allowed. You will not supplant existing beds.
Yes.
As you all know, as we discussed at the beginning, OHS has engaged an economist and their team to analyze the transaction, doing what we've called an abbreviated version of the cost-to-market impact review. And we're tasked with looking at market concentration and the effect on access to healthcare, including Medicaid access, affordability and quality. You know, we await the results of their analysis, but we wanted to talk a little bit about what you all cited as some of the benefits to community hospitals when they come into the network and balancing that with the concerns that are raised in literature and that we've read, you know, in the media about the consolidation of healthcare generally. So as consolidation increases in the healthcare market broadly, can you speak to the benefits or the efficiencies that you've experienced or that you would expect residents to see due to the consolidation that occurs when bringing someone into the network?
Sure. Gerald Wadere, Vice President, Hartford Healthcare. First of all, we have to recall that this is a distressed asset. So a lot of this is rebuilding what was there and enhancing it. It's been discussed by other, other colleagues. So part of the operating efficiencies actually will be generated by making full use of the facilities and expanding the capacity. So by doing so, we're able to spread overhead over larger base. Even if we didn't have that opportunity of sort of going back the business of our approach, you know, our hard way Hartford Healthcare works because of our quality, patient safety, bringing those patients back, we would still have efficiencies that come from, for example, having a shared electronic medical provider, sadly missing in the current environment. And that will create efficiencies for providers and better experience for patients and families, et cetera. So those sort of back-of-house activities will be able to enhance the experience for our colleagues there, our patients, et cetera. It's the profile of.
What were the key concerns that arise when thinking about consolidation and the effect that it could have on the community? And how does Hartford Healthcare work to mitigate any potential detrimental effects of consolidation in the healthcare system?
Well, meeting the needs of the community, essentially, that's the largest thing from my perspective. I'm not sure that it's necessarily the best person to totally respond to that. I think C M I R work, you do, it's for some of that. But the reality is it's just doing the right thing for patients we're in. Helping improve access. I think that mitigates the past that you're asking questions.
Jeff Flax speaking. Number one, we're going to lower costs, make care more affordable. We're going to be able to bring our providers, who are able to enhance the level of capability, level of specialty, specialization locally, opposed to ask people to go to the ordinary environment. Secondly, in this moment, it's never been more clear we've been able to get better at healthcare. It's really because of the nature of artificial intelligence. Innovation platforms are available to us, the technology that's available to us, regional health capabilities are available to us. And our system is going to be able to put all of it into these local communities. We've done that in other regional communities. There's ample evidence to show access gets substantially better. We can create much more affordable healthcare, bringing patients to the highest quality, most convenient, lowest cost of care environment. And enhance quality as a result of this. So I'm very confident that we go into the local community, so much to offer today, more to offer today than ever before.
One of the concerns that comes about with consolidation is market concentration, which leads to market dominance or market competitive issues when negotiating contracts, for example, that could allow provider organization to demand higher prices or reimbursement. I know I've spoken to members of your team at various times about the independent nature of, of those negotiations. Can you speak to how you undertake all of that process? And some of the, some of the, some of the protections in place that protect against what might just be a large entity exercising market dominance there?
Jerry Wadere, when you're looking at Chester, first of all, we're starting out, we're taking all of their contracts, right? So there's no change there. And then as time moves on, contracts expire, there will be an opportunity. We're negotiating each schedule for each hospital and it's independent of their separate streams, et cetera, which addresses the issue here.
Can you speak a little bit more, you know, again, in a public setting, about the, how the independent contracts negotiations work and for the different entities? You know, there are legal protections in place for all-or-nothing contracts and things like that. Can you just speak a little bit more about the independent nature and taking each of those work streams separately?
If you could just speak up a little bit there.
Sure. So each, each care hospital, while it has many similarities, also has, has differences. So when looking at, we're looking at what the delivery of services being delivered at each, in each individual hospital and underlying costs that need for cost recovery. And so we're modeling that way. Our contracting team models it at the local level and our counterparts in the negotiation, managed care and insurance company are also modeling that same, same data for each individual hospital. So that's, that's part of the creation.
So continuing on with affordability and costs. Questions nine and eleven of the application request that Hartford Healthcare provides specific details, data and evidence from prior transactions that support how the proposed transfer will ensure the, will ensure and enhance affordability of healthcare. Similar to my earlier question about access, a lot of data and information was provided, part of the abbreviated cost and market impact reviews submissions, which have all been sealed. He provides some testimony about specific improvements in costs and efficiency or in affordability from your prior transactions and how you will ensure and enhance affordability for the Manchester area.
I just have for a minute off. I hate to do this, but just give me a minute. I just asked for a minute off, I hate to do this, but just give me a minute. Take this question. Bottom line is standalone independent hospitals are not able to achieve the efficiencies that we're able to do at the system level. You know, we've given examples in the application of the number of surgery centers that we've added in each community. For example, three in Charlotte, area five in the St. Vincent's area. Or ASC and endoscopy surgery centers, new capacity to the market. That is also just driving lower cost care and outside the hospital walls. We've brought in partnerships, you mentioned urgent care, which is obviously ninety percent less than the cost of an evening visit. And we've actually been able to track over time of kind of moving care from, you know, those lower QD one and two visits in the hospital setting to urgent care centers. But I also look to the innovations we bought in terms of retail partnerships and bringing businesses such as Amazon One Medical. To the market partnerships with Walgreens, we're able to use on technologies such as virtual entitled care. So people are able to get care right there in location. And as in thinking of the window market where we've brought more rural healthcare, our urgent care partnership in one, I think, brought fourteen thousand. Overcost setting, we also added a one med location in Killenley where it is offering kind of in a local grocery store, store access to care. We're not able to find a primary care provider.
Thank you, and. I know there was some repetition there and we're just trying to make sure that we connect all the dots to the relevant categories. So you may reiterate some of the same points in this question. One of the things that we're tasked with specifically addressing is Medicaid access. Some of the items you just mentioned, I assume are also available to Medicaid beneficiaries. Can you speak a little bit to Hartford Healthcare's experience being a Medicaid beneficiary? And, and how that has developed in some of your prior transactions?
So certainly, so as I referenced in all of our partnerships and I, I referenced CoHealth, I have a bunch of trade field on that, or Amity or surgeries. All have to adopt our pay policy and accept Medicaid at those standards. And that is consistent across all of, you know, in addition to access and quality, we're ensuring that those are also cared for. The twenty-four seven, I think, has brought, I know has brought a new level of sensibility to that patient population as well as what we've done regarding our need period. Health and kind of civic capacity in bringing care to those locations. I referenced on that, we actually have a location and a pos that we put in the children, young individuals like in Hartford to serve a maybe.
One of the things our office hears about frequently, especially anywhere outside of urban centers of the state. Are accessible for services. Can you speak about the current state of labor and delivery at Manchester Memorial? And your expectations for that service going forward?
My understanding regarding their label, their services is a high quality that we've staffed up with a number of local providers and we don't anticipate. To that service. I think what we've done in a number of our settings, and especially in our health equity work, is look at what services we can wrap around. Labor and delivery unit to make sure we're having the highest quality from before birth and education and prenatal care service to after birth support to those communities.
Yeah, I think for us, the women's health service line, pre, intra, postpartum is extremely important for us. So when we, when you look at our primary care practices, the ability to support our OB-GYN teams across the entire state of Connecticut is, is, is growing. Our pediatric alliances, I think, is, is strong across the state of Connecticut. So we anticipate that the Manchester Memorial OB program will be supported. We also want to support the OB-GYNs within the hospital setting by making sure that we have coverage day and night so that the patients are cared for, babies are cared for. And I think that's, that's the commitment that we have both in the hospital and out of the hospital.
We received a public comment last or yesterday during the day that we shared with attorney Feldman and Hartford Healthcare yesterday afternoon. With certain assertions about engaging OB-GYN clinicians, non-compete restrictions, covenants not to compete. And some of the difficulties in engaging with the practice group. So can you just speak about your expectations and plans? I know that offer letters went out yesterday, so can you speak a little bit about that? Your expectations for engaging the necessary OB-GYN providers that you were just referencing? And so those, yeah.
Just for the record, I, I would like to just for the record state that probably most of the assertions in that letter were false.
Sorry, could you repeat that question?
Yeah, can you speak about your expectations for engaging OB-GYN clinicians in the practice group? And how it relates to restrictive covenants not to compete? And there are legal protections there as well in the state and just your expectations for engaging those clinicians?
We have a very pluralistic medical staff model across the entire, our entire state and all of our regions. I expect that to continue at Manchester Memorial and, you know, for us, we welcome our community doctors. We, we welcome everybody to work with us, so I expect that to continue both inside and outside of the hospital.
Despite our technical difficulties, we have reached the end of OHS's questions, almost right on time at twelve o'clock. So we are now going to take our lunch break from twelve until one o'clock. We will reconvene at one o'clock for public comment, which at this point, I believe we have one registrant. So we'll have that individual speak and anyone else who comes in, this is the beginning of time, and then we'll have closing statements from. Thank you all very much, and we can go off the record.
Welcome back, for those just joining us, this is the second portion of today's hearing regarding Hartford Healthcare's proposed acquisition of the ECHM facilities and related entities. It's a matter docketed as twenty-five dash three-two-eight-four-three dash ECOM. It's frozen. Okay. The Afghans are seeking an emergency certificate of need for the transfer of ownership. We had the technical portion this morning and we're now ready for public comment. Sign up for public comment began at nine-thirty and has been in person and on the Zoom comments. If you have not yet signed up, please do so right now. As of this moment, we have a single person who signed up, we have the mayor Vernon, Mr. Dan Champagne. So only I discuss the order in which we take the comments. But since we only have one, we'll just turn our attention to Mayor Champagne.
Thank you and good afternoon. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak on this emergency certificate of need application. First, I want to, can you hear me?
Yes, we're, we just want to pull you up on the video and we're struggling to find you.
Okay, should be under the town of Vernon administration.
Let's give us one moment.
Okay.
All right, there you are, I apologize.
No problem. All set?
Sorry, yes.
All right, again, thank you for allowing me to speak on, on the emergency certificate of need application. First, I completely support Hartford Healthcare's purchase of ECHN. Obviously, ECHN's been struggling for some time. What's that? ECHN's been struggling for some time and this is something that's truly needed. Hartford Healthcare provides quality medical, medical care and I look forward to what they bring to ECHN as a whole, including Rockville General Hospital. Vernon alone has about six thousand ambulance calls a day. That's sixteen, or I'm sorry, a year, that's sixteen a day and that doesn't include the surrounding towns. And one of the things I want to talk about that with is every time a Vernon ambulance or the surrounding town's ambulance leaves the town. And has to drive further than Rockville General Hospital, the turnaround time can be up to an hour. Which leaves our towns without that ambulance. And many of the surrounding towns have volunteer ambulances. It's very important to have a hospital that has an emergency room in a functioning hospital, including, you know, beds and ICU and the rest. Because they're quicker, if somebody can seek or if somebody can get to the hospital and the quicker the care, the better the outcomes we're going to have. Rockville General Hospital is the closest for many of our communities, for most of Vernon, Ellington, Tolland, and heading east. We look at this as a, you know, a certificate, emergency certificate of need and I, and I kind of laugh at the word need. As all of us know, when, when you call up a doctor and you need an appointment, it could be up to six months. You go to an emergency room, you're waiting a considerable amount of time. And, and obviously the bigger hospitals, it's even longer. So for a need, I don't think there's any question, there's a need, there's always going to be a need for an emergency room, there's always going to need, be a need for the hospital. This should be, this should be a simple decision, I think. The needs there. The need actually increases every single year. And the closest hospital, the closest I can get my, to, from my house or anybody else's house to the hospital, the better care we're going to have. And because Hartford Hospital is such, is such a, I'm sorry, Hartford Healthcare is such a quality product that they bring. You know, that makes all of us safer. And so I am speaking for the town of Vernon for Rockville General Hospital, but I'm also talking for ECHN as a whole. And in the end, I want to say Hartford Healthcare will be good for Vernon and all of our surrounding towns. So I, I truly support this application and I hope this doesn't get held up and moves right along, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just give us a moment to. So my understanding is that no one else to sign up for public comment, so that'll conclude the public comment portion of today's hearing. Anyone attending either in person or remotely can still submit written comments to COYcomment@CT.gov. Written public comment can be submitted anytime up until a final action is taken on the application. However, as I mentioned earlier, given the emergency nature of the proceeding, you should submit that comment within three days of today, otherwise we can't guarantee that it will be considered. So with that, I don't have anything further. Feldman, would you like to make any closing remarks?
You heard from Mr. Flex, the many ways in which Hartford Healthcare will infuse its resources, its know-how and expertise. To enhance a community hospital that otherwise would be shuttered. Heard about the success Hartford Healthcare has had with other community hospitals. Improving its quality, increasing access to new and innovative services. Recruiting world-class physicians from all over the country to join the Hartford healthcare system. More importantly, you heard how existing physician relationships in the greater Manchester community will not be disrupted, only enhanced. Hospitaling, form a community health needs assessment to determine the most pressing needs of the community. Heard how the process will include community stakeholders. You heard that Hartford Healthcare is committed to providing the right care, right setting, at the right time.
Closing statement.
Every state was started. Heard that Hartford Healthcare and Manchester Memorial Hospital Incorporated is committed to providing the right care, setting at the right time, resulting in lower cost. Manchester Memorial Hospital patients, patients in the greater Manchester area will have numerous other options, whoops, sorry, sorry. Will have numerous other options for their healthcare if they choose. One second, please. If you choose to receive their care elsewhere. In closing, we hope that we've provided the Office of Health Strategy with the information that it needed to approve this proposal. That Hartford Healthcare has demonstrated its commitment to invest significant resources to address the needs of both the community and the local healthcare system. Thank you.
And thank you to all of the members of Hartford Healthcare who are here today, including ones who had to get back to work. I have nothing further.
Want to add, I thank you and, and in particular for your patience as we dealt with some technology issues that, that I know. Patient, but appreciate your patience.
The hearing is adjourned, the matter concluded upon issuance of whatever final action. And that's it, thank you so much.